All right, good morning, everyone. Want to welcome you all to our August 4th Board of Supervisors meeting. Want to thank you all for coming and being here with us and hope you all had a nice, enjoyable, hot weekend. We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order and I've asked Supervisor Howard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, full of its own citizens for all.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed with our meeting. Can we get a motion to approve our minutes of our regular meeting and work session held on July 21st?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Can we get a motion to approve our demands and handwritten warrants?
Chairman, I've gone ahead and we've all reviewed the invoices more that are greater than a thousand dollars. And they appear to be in order and I would make a motion that we approve the demands and requests for payment for the county.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll now turn the time over to our county attorney, Mr. Scott Bennett.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you. What we have before you today is the renewal of a contract with Kent Volkmer and his firm. Just by way of reminder, Mr. Volkmer is the former county attorney in Penal County. He has since opened his own shop. He has a law firm that he does civil work as well as lobbying. We had contracted with him the last fiscal year to assist us with some of our civil work. It was unknown whether or not he would choose to continue the contract, but after discussions with him, he's excited to get going again. So we're bringing this contract forward to you to approve this agreement. As you're well aware, right now, we have a vacancy in our civil department. And when I say a vacancy in the department, I mean the department. Our one civil attorney went, became a partner at a law firm and left. So the prosecutors are handling the civil right now, but it would be nice to have someone who specializes in civil work available. And we're hoping that the board will approve this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Thank Mr. Volkmer for being willing to work with us. Do you have any questions or concerns from the board?
I think this is just an opportunity, a good opportunity for us to move forward with this and get you a little bit of help over there, especially in this particular area. I think it's much needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, if there's no other discussion, to approve the agreement with Volkmer Law and Lobbying for 2025, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you so much.
And I'll turn the time over to our treasurer, Ms. Cindor. Thank you for being here today, Cindy.
Good morning. Today I have to present two offers for over the counter tax deeds on parcels 106, 26, 132, and 142. These offers include a small amount over the minimum required to meet the past due taxes, fees, and interest that is due on them parcels.
Awesome. Thank you. We appreciate you cleaning all these up for us. We always like to collect money. Any comments, questions?
Just appreciate it. You're always moving forward with these. It's refreshing to see how hard you work and what you bring back to us. So thank you so much, Cindy.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Yes, well done. It's, I'm always intrigued to see who's investing in Graham County. I believe this is Connecticut.
Yes.
A lady from Connecticut who bought these two parcels on Thunderbird Hills. And so, but thank you. And it is great to add to the, our treasury and to take delinquent taxes off of the rolls. So I'd go ahead and make a motion that we do approve the over the counter tax deed for parcels 106, 26, 132, and 106, 25, 142.
106, 26, 142.
Okay, 106, 26, 142. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
We will now hear from Haley Shoup with the Health Department. Thank you for being here today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have two things to bring to your guys' attention. The first is a request to get a contract with Lisa Taylor. She is an IBCLC, which is an international board of certified lactation consultant. She works at Mount Graham Regional Medical Center and she is willing to be our contract IBCLC for forty dollars for thirty minute consultation visit. This is a required position to have with WIC and unfortunately, none of our staff have that credential. So we do have to contract out. Most times, we don't have to use her. We haven't in the past. It's just something that we do have to have. So, but WIC provides training and we have a breastfeeding hotline that doesn't usually require us to use her services. Any questions about that one?
Questions or concerns?
None here. It's just a necessity.
Agreed.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Lisa Taylor for IBCLC consultants to serve with WIC women.
And I'll second the motion, Chairman.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And then the second one is to request permission to use our budget to buy some steel cabinets for our WIC office in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and eleven cents. We just, we have some really old cabinets in our WIC office that the doors don't work, they don't lock. So we are hoping to upgrade as we do have it in our budget, but it is not allotted for the correct code on the county side.
Questions?
Certainly have to have someplace for her to put her stuff, don't we? So I'm not against it.
And Chairman, it's the fact that the funding is federal funding, it's nice not to have to deplete the general fund for that. So I'm in approval. I would go ahead and move that we approve the unbudgeted, unplanned, but needed purchase of the steel cabinets for WIC.
And I will second that.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Haley. Next, here from Hannah Duderstadt with our Elections Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here to ask the board's approval for the purchase of unbudgeted capital of election equipment upgrade, not to exceed thirty seven hundred dollars. This is from our election lender ESNS, which stands for Election Systems and Software. And they've received state approval for this upgrade, but unfortunately, this announcement came after our budget hearings. I apologize for that. Couple of reasons for the upgrade. It does have some security enhancements. It adds support for the languages that we have on our accessible devices that we send to our vote centers. And additional results reporting modules, which will come in handy for those public record requests that we receive. And also, it is part of our contingency planning that we have to be compatible with our backup county, which is Hila. And they're doing the upgrade as well. So in order for us to be compatible, we need to be upgraded as well. So I'm here to ask the board's approval.
Great. Thank you, Hannah. Questions?
I think it's a necessary upgrade and I just want to give a shout out to you, Hannah, for the hard work you do in our election department, where our elections are run with the help you have. I just really appreciate everything you do in that department.
Thank you.
Keeping our elections the way they are and safe and very thorough. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would note, Chairman, that we are the backup for Greenley County. Do they have this system also?
They do, yes.
So we need to be compatible and it's mostly hardware, so it's a one-time purchase and not a ongoing renewal every year where we have to pay more and more money.
Correct.
Very good. Well, it's a general fund money, but elections are critical and election security. So I would go ahead and make a motion that we approve the purchase of the election equipment upgrade.
I will second that.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Hannah. We will now turn the time over to Manager Welker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're well aware, Graham County has several towers throughout the whole county. On three of these towers, we have had a longstanding contract with Singular. They're also associated with T-Mobile. And they provide, they have equipment. And they provide, they have equipment on three of our towers, and they have for several years, and have paid a lease to us. That original lease is set to expire next year. We've been working with them and a third party for about a year trying to get this renewed. And we have come to terms with an amendment. So the original contract, which is still the governing contract, is one contract with three towers on it. These amendments are three separate amendments, which effectively just extend the existing terms of the original contract for an additional five, it gives us five additional five-year extension terms, so a potential for twenty-five additional years. These leases increase by three percent every year automatically. And the three locations are on Graham Cemetery, Pima City Hall, and one right here behind us here in the middle of Safford. So we own all these towers. We're receiving just shy of six thousand dollars a month for the lease on all three of these. And again, the terms are basically the same as what they've been in the past. And this just extends it for five additional five-year extensions, and we recommend approving these extensions.
So that's a twenty-five year?
Potential for an additional twenty-five years.
Okay.
So they're five, five, five-year terms, options.
Any questions, concerns from the board?
Certainly another necessity that we have to do, and we use them a lot. So yeah, I have no objections at all.
I did have, thank you Supervisor. Chairman, I did have one question for our manager, and that is with the, since we lease from the town of Pima, and also from the BLM, as we enter into twenty-five-year, you know, terms, or the potential for up to twenty-five years of lease responsibilities, do we have a way of extending our leases so that we don't end up with, you know, we're locked in with Singular now? And in the event that Pima or the BLM decides to increase their fees, is there any way to extend our agreements with them to cover that time?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman David, I don't know if McCoy has that answer readily available. I do not, but I can get that to you pretty quickly.
Just curious, but that's something, you know, the lease is the business item. I'm just looking at long-term.
I can get that answer for you later.
Okay, thank you.
If no other discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the tower lease amendments with Singler's to all the mentioned sites.
And I'll, I'll second Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll now take this opportunity for the members of the board and our county manager to present a brief summary of current events. And we will start with Manager Welker.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I know we have a very tight agenda for the rest of this morning, clear up till noon. So with that, I'll forego my report today.
Okay. Supervisor Howard?
I will also just pass on my report, time restraints.
Supervisor David?
Likewise.
Okay.
I just wanted to add one thing. We all had the opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting for the hospital, and just want to commend the hospital on the great changes that they're making there. And they have a great staff and great people at Mount Graham Hospital, and I feel like we're truly blessed to have them here in our community. We'll now close our regular meeting to have a public hearing, and I'd like to turn the time over to Steve McGoy with our Planning and Zoning Department.
Good morning, gentlemen. I have three similar rezonings, all asking for RR zoning, which is half acre, single-family residential. The first being Rezone 935-25. This is two acre and a half parcels south of town on Lebanon Loop. This went to the commission a couple of weeks ago and got a three to two in favor of giving you a favorable recommendation. The chairman, thinking there might be a tie, didn't vote. So there were six people there, but it got five votes, three to two. I'm going to turn this over to Stephanie and let her tell you what she wants to do, but basically, they're asking to take those two acre and a half pieces. They're going to combine them and split them back out into half acre parcels and build houses on them for sale. And there was one neighbor who was opposed to. He didn't say a lot of opposition. He asked a lot of questions probably in favor in in getting ready for today. He'll let you know where he, how he feels today. But Stephanie, you want to go ahead and tell the board what you want to do, and we'll go from there.
Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning.
I'm just going to read this because I don't do public speaking. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding our request to rezone a parcel of land in Graham County to rural residential with a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. We are proposing a small-scale land division of five residential lots. Even though the parcel is large enough to technically accommodate more, we would have to subdivide. This means that some of the lots will exceed the minimum size, creating a thoughtful layout with variety and generous spacing between homes while preserving the rural character of the area. We want to contribute a real solution to the problem we have here of housing, the need for housing. The affordability has just gone out the window for a lot of people. And these homes will be under sixteen hundred square feet, maybe between a thousand and sixteen hundred. We haven't really decided. But that is where people are affording homes. And we're going to try and keep them low profile. Two of the lots will actually be bigger. One of them, we're going to keep a whole acre, the one with, there's a double wide. And we're probably going to try and keep that one a whole acre. And then the rest of them will, because that one has a well. And the well, we're going to decommission, we're going to connect to city water. We want to be able to avoid a full subdivision process. I mean, we can't do that out there. There's no room because of septic. I wouldn't, really wouldn't want to get smaller lots than that. I'm building on a really small lot right now that's like nine thousand square feet, and you could barely fit the septic on it. So like twenty thousand is great, but the subdividing process is hard. So that's what we're doing. We're looking for lots that we can divide and be reasonable and still give people some space.
Does the board have any questions?
How are you going to enter these lots? Will they be one specific entrance to them, or will they each have their own?
So the way I've got it right now, I was playing around with it a little bit yesterday. I'm not very good at this. There's the current driveway. I'm considering keeping the driveway like right where it's at, and it may weave in and out a little bit, but it'll enter off of Lebanon. I'm going to try and keep as many trees as possible, but with septic, you have to clear them out within a certain amount of feet. But I'd like to keep quite a few so that it remains the private.
So is that two parcels or one?
It's two, it's two parcels, and I believe it's actually three point one eight in total. But in order to get, you know, what we want to do, to build the smaller homes, because they cost so much to build, we need to get more lots out of that. Otherwise, we just build bigger homes, and they're harder for people to afford.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But this is a crisis right now. So we're just trying to address it.
That's fine.
I don't mean this.
Vice Chairman?
Yeah, my, thank you, Chairman. My concerns are several, but the, I think that, to me, if I were an adjoining property, the last thing I would want, especially Mr. Nice's property, it's, I've never been in one of their homes that wasn't just beautiful and well above the, you know, built well above the market, existing market value. So I'd be concerned about a number of small houses, especially if there was a driveway, lots of traffic just adjacent to my house. And so a shared driveway, if this is approved, to me, would be essential to maintaining a buffer and giving the adjacent property owners the privacy and kind of the rural nature of that area. I think that average, according to different studies, anywhere from six to eight trips a day out of a house. So you multiply that times five, you've got forty vehicles coming and going, if that average holds. And so I would almost, I would consider stipulating, if this is approved, that there be a central driveway and not have, you know, developed so that you're driving right by someone's side yard all the time.
Yes, correct. So the two parcels right there, the driveway is in between the two parcels that we own. So that's, that is my plan. I've been looking at ways to minimize the effect to the neighbors.
Okay, is that something that you, you know, you are considering strongly?
Yes.
Something you would agree to as a stipulation?
Yes.
Have that so that it wouldn't be a, so we wouldn't have traffic by the Nice property with?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I'm still considering, but the fact, if you didn't have, one of the concerns was the water. If you didn't have city water, and you're punching four more wells.
Oh, that water's terrible.
Yeah.
We're not going to, that's one of the reasons we're going to get rid of it.
Yeah, I think that that would make me stick to the one acre density just because of the concerns about water table and how sustainable that is into the future. So septic, that's another concern. And of course, septic is, we're hoping that that will perk and, because?
I've spoken to Taylor Gifford, and he thinks it will.
Okay, good.
We actually just built three out on Cactus and Twentieth.
Very good.
And they did just fine perking.
Okay, and our infrastructure is, as we struggle with the density versus the need for housing, we are not, and as people say, well, we're not going to subdivide, we're going to have a subdivision. We're just going to build, you know, maximum number of spaces. Then that doesn't improve the infrastructure, and we end up with more traffic as we, if we increase the density on an existing road. And so that's our problem.
The problem with subdividing is the expense of it.
Oh, of course, yeah. It's almost prohibitive when you're doing it as speculation.
A subdivision, we were under contract to buy land by the high school. And the subdivision cost was four point five million before you even start building a house.
Right, right. Okay. If you would, and I know a permitting process, but if, and inspection, but a large entrance, you know, big nice radiuses as you go into your property, that will help to get people on and off the highway quicker, or off the road, so that they're not lingering and subject to more, more time waiting to make that turn. So that, those are some of my concerns. But I, yeah, we are, this neighborhood is just, it's really representative of our whole county. Our big issue now for zoning is density. And how do we accommodate the needs for housing and still maintain the rural nature of our county? That people, they intentionally move out of town, they don't want to be in town. They want that rural nature. So, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we have, well, next here from Mr. Franklin Nei. Thank you, Mr. Nei, for being here today.
Okay, just to start off with, they're asking for twenty thousand square foot lots, not twenty-one thousand, seven eighty, which is a half acre. Okay, just to start off, it's not a half acre. Can you bring up on the screen and show me the properties in the area that are point four five of an acre, within a half mile of that? I believe you'll find two. Okay? And I have the property, as you said, just south of her, and some people with the property just north of her here also. And we've, basically, our discussion is, we'd like to keep it at the one acres. A couple of reasons, as we already discussed, the traffic in and out. Right now, the average house has, per gram, per the census, three people per household, with a maximum of one vehicle per person, assuming they all sooner or later turn into be adults. That brings us to three cars per house at this time, which with three on one acre lot, you'd have nine houses. If you change that to what would be the minimum, which are permitted six to seven houses, because the road can be included in your acreage, that would bring it to at least twenty-one cars coming in and out of that road, coming onto Lebanon Loop, which is also not a large road built for this kind of travel going in and out. We've talked to most of the neighbors, most of the neighbors have agreed that it's not something we'd like to see in the area. We all have acreage usually larger than an acre, and we'd like to keep it at least to the one acre minimum. And I'm all for building houses that people can afford. You want to build a half, a thousand square foot house on an acre, go ahead. You want to build sixteen hundred, you're going to be three hundred and twenty thousand dollars into that house, just as a normal house. And you're right, my house to the south of it is probably closer to the six hundred thousand dollar range, because the interior of it is totally a different house, and it sits at just over forty-five hundred square foot. I would like to see it stay because of the traffic on the roads, because of the need for water, power, and for the additional housing, we do need it. But not to mention, how much trash and noise will we have also in that area? That brings in additional trash trucks, additional garbage pickup, additional, assuming a good, a family has kids, they're going to have the kids going up and down the street. That is not a highly patrolled area. We don't want to see more accidents by just putting more and more people into a small area. I think there's other places this could be done probably more effectively than it would be done in this specific area. So I am in favor of keeping it at one acre. Thank you.
Questions?
Questions? Do you have, hang on one second, please. Questions for Mr. Nei?
What do you do with that property currently? Do you rent it, or do you live there?
My daughter's looking at living there right now. We actually have three contractors in the area. We just took the, you have to know the building. It is forty by a hundred, but forty by forty of that is a garage, which has a, just a garage area. The other sixty by forty was a living room, kitchen, bathroom, one bedroom. We've increased it now to three bedrooms, three bathrooms. And right now, my daughter's looking at living in it instead of living at home.
But right now, you're, nobody's living in it?
Right now, nobody lives there. We do have a gentleman, which is our relative from Globe. He works at the mine. He has an RV that he's parked there, and I told him, park it there all you want, because, one, it helps me keep the place secure and keep someone there and keeps everybody away.
And my next question is, you said you talked to several neighbors, but I understand during the PNC hearing, he was the only one that was against this, correct? No other written letters or anything?
No, I don't, you didn't get any letters right here?
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Vice Chairman, do you have any?
No, thank you. Well done, Mr. Nye.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this rezoning?
No, come on.
You have to go to the microphone, please.
And, and we'll, they'll have a form for you to fill out after you're done.
Okay.
Saying that you were here.
Tell them, tell them your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Marlene Martin and I live, um, sixty-two, seventy-two South Lebanon Loop Road. I, um, live there. I inherited that property and it's been in my family for years and years and years. And, uh, my mother owned it last and she gave it to me and my siblings. And then her, her mother inherited, her father had it and so on. They came from Utah and settled here in the valley. I'm not in favor of, because this will be right next door to my property, um, for multiple homes. One or two is fine, but not multiple. I'm planning on giving my property to my children if I should pass. I agree that, um, family had this property for a reason. Out there where it's country, you have the mountains, you, you have, um, it's just, we didn't want to have a place. I came from a place in Tucson. I lived in a home in Tucson for twenty-nine years. And it's just, houses are right next to each other and it's just a lot of work, lived on a busy street, people had to come in to get to their street. It's just, I just don't like it and I'm not favor of it. And my sister Karen Weaver that lives on the property, uh, they're out of town right now, but, um, they don't want, um, this to take place either, um, changing the zoning. And that's about all.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Your property is the property just to the north of this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's a, there's already two homes and, um, and, uh, some sheds on the front, but there's two homes there that we've used. Family has come and visited and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this? Okay. Do you have anything else to add? Steve? Sorry about that, I didn't see your hand up.
Make sure you tell them their name, your name and. Uh, my name's Alejandro Tapia. Uh, my address is six, three, six, three South Lebanon Loop. It's, uh, like right across the street to the right a little bit. Yeah, that open lot more on the bottom. Yeah, right there. Um, I'm just opposed to making it below the one acre. Um, we moved out of town to keep, keep our space, have space and that's pretty much it, you know? I don't want to see everybody just, bunch of houses getting compacted into a small area. That's about it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, seeing, seeing none. Steve? You have anything else?
Really have anything additional?
Steve, my question is this to you.
Go ahead.
Is there other half acre lots close to that? And then my follow-up question on that, you've mentioned in P and Z, uh, the Nyes were the only one there that was opposed. I, I am curious to know why there was more, not more opposition at P and Z where they could have got a different feel on this, on this, uh, land split. There was no other opposition. I, I just don't understand why more people, we have several people here that are supposed now that wasn't P and Z where P and Z might have had a different outlook on what they're talking about.
I, I can't speak for anybody else why they did or didn't come, but even, even Mr. Nye did not vocally get opposed. He just asked quite a few questions so that he'd have information for today, I think.
What about other half acre lots in that area? Yes?
Can you back out and turn the zoning on? Because I don't think there's very many. Is your zoning on? Directly to the west of it, there's a conditional use permit for, uh, a church to run a kitchen back there. I don't see any, can you click on that one piece of purple, that AR? That's a two acre minimum, so no, there's not, there's nothing there within a half mile.
Okay, thank you.
At least not legally.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. This is a tough one. I mean, obviously, obviously we need smaller, affordable housing in our area. Personally, I like to respect, um, landowners' rights and, uh, on both sides of the table, Stephanie's and also the surrounding neighbors. I don't really have anything else to add. Do we have a motion or any questions or concerns?
I've, I've got a comment, uh, as, as we begin to deliberate and that is the, the lament that we don't have master planning, uh, you, you know, and, so that it's clearly defined so that people who are purchasing for the purposes of development will, will know what is likely and, and unlikely to happen so that we, and, and I would note that I think all three of our issues today are, well, two of the three are, are land splits. I think eighty, ninety percent of, of your business now, uh, Mr. McGoye, is the, uh, is our, our request for splits into smaller lots and, and, and density, density related, trying to, uh, put more residents into, uh, existing parcels. So that, that it's, uh, that is a, uh, the issue of the day for, I think, planning and zoning.
It's, it's going to become more and more, is what we're going to see because we have one acre, one, one acre zoning allows for a well and a septic system. And the only way to get below that is to have either city sewer or city water. And so that is going to facilitate where this type of zoning gets asked for. Any place there's city water or city sewer, that's, or, or both, you're going to find even smaller lots asked for. But there's not very many places that have one or the other. They're truthfully outside the city limits. So this is going to be, it, it's going to happen more and more frequently, but it's less and less property that can, can facilitate it.
And, and I, I should be a little more conversant, but we have the, the R two, R two thousand or, or, or twenty thousand, you know, or R, was it R twenty? Where you have a twenty thousand acre or twenty thousand square foot lot. Do we have an, an R, uh, uh, you know, twenty-three or, or twenty-one point six-seven?
No, that is since the beginning of, since nineteen sixty-nine, when this ordinance got adopted, twenty thousand square feet was considered a buildable half acre. Basically, if you had a half acre and you gave the street to us, you'd be at twenty thousand square feet and that's why they, I think that's why they pulled that. But it's been that way for sure as long as I've worked here.
Very good.
I think, I think we're going to see this in our, in our discussions, Steve, that we've had in work sessions, that the affordability of an acre lot is a thing of the past for the majority of the people in this county. And I think these properties that are outliers, that the county has jurisdiction on, this is something that's just going to happen over and over again for the affordability clause, for people to be able to buy a lot and build a home. We're in a housing crisis and I know people, I, I understand everybody's voice is concerned today, I really do. But I am concerned about the, the young families, the families that cannot afford an acre, acre and a half, the, the, the luxury of that. We have to put people somewhere and nobody, it's, it's a cliche, not in my backyard, I don't want it. I think, I think that we have to open our eyes, even, even the landowners in the pa, that, that's, that's went south, that has bought properties and loves their outdoors. I understand it completely. I always say if you don't want neighbors, buy everything up around you that you can, that you can afford, but that's not always logical for people to do as well. But in my mind, in the future of this town, with the things that's happened with the mine, the things that are coming down the pike, we have to be mindful of these things as much as I hate it, I love my space as well. But I think we have to be mindful of where we're going to put all these folks. And if there's a developer or a person that's willing to make a, a decent area, and I, I know subdivisions, I like subdivisions, but I know the expenses of subdivision as well. So in my mind, we just have to be mindful of where we're going to put all these folks. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay. Any more questions or comments, concerns? Do we have a motion?
I, I do wish, I want to reiterate what I said as well. On these planning and zoning issues, I, I wish the public, I know they have two chances to come in and visit with us. I wish the public would, i- if, if, if there's that concerned about these issues, get in here and talk to P and Z where P and Z has a clear picture of what's going on, where we have a clear picture of what's going on. P and Z's outlook could have been co, totally different. We get a recommendation coming from us from P and Z as favorable. Yes, it was three and two, but their job is to, to do their job and, and we are to listen to what they have to say. And they came back to us with a favorable recommendation on this. It was close, but it was still favorable.
I agree.
So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve this zoning split on RZ nine three five dash twenty-five, uh, to one and, from one and a half acres, uh, let's see, on RZ nine three two five and what is it, Dustin, uh, one oh six, AP one oh six dash twelve dash one oh six B and one oh six one twelve dash one oh six C to be rezoned from general land use to single family residence.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Howard, would you accept a friendly amendment to, to, to add a stipulation that they have a shared, shared driveway that's in the middle of the property and, and to provide a, a buffer for both the, uh, adjoining neighbors?
Absolutely.
Okay. Based on that, I'll, I'll go ahead and second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Let me say something else that came up after that meeting and just, I don't know that need said, but an acre is a lot to take care of and some people just need smaller lots, they can't, they can't handle an acre. So that, that got said after the meeting and it doesn't really, but that was, that was some thought from, from the commission that half acre is about all some families can take care of, so. Our next rezon request is REZ nine three seven dash twenty-five. This is parcel one oh five, oh two, oh five, four. It's three and a half acres. Their request is made to rezon a portion of and only a single half acre portion of This is at, basically up against Peck Wash and, in downtown Bryce. The commission listened to this and voted unanimously in favor of this. The parcel there, if you can, you can see the part that's touching the road, that, um, with the existing house on it is the piece that they want to be one half acre so they can sell that to facilitate building on the three acres behind it. That three acres will remain one acre zoning. And that's, that's what the Oars are asking for there here, if they want to speak to this, especially if I didn't present it properly. But that's, my understanding is they want a half acre zoning only on the piece that fronts the road. And then they will have access along the west edge of that to the rear and make three one acre parcels out of that.
I, I had a question, Mr. Chairman, uh, two. Uh, one, one is I wasn't aware that there was a downtown in Bryce. And then secondly, um, uh, i- if you put the driveway to the west and, uh, to access that, that other residence, it looks like there's very little setback there. Uh, is that, uh, resident going to be okay? Because you say to the west, correct?
That's my assumption, but I think I heard somebody say that.
Okay. So can you, can you highlight that, uh, with, with your laser pointer?
This right here is.
So, and, and as the, uh, joining resident, the, the resident to the west, are they, have they expressed any, any concerns at all?
I don't know if you can zoom in far enough to see the actual fences, but the blue line does not lay on the property lines. That's always something you have to know when you're working in GIS is that, um, the lines are correct, the picture underneath it gets moved around sometimes.
Okay.
And so, um, there's plenty of room for that to happen, but.
Okay, very good. That's, that was just, uh, one of my first, first thoughts is, is that we add, add, uh, parcel in the back or, or buildable parcel and, and increase the, the.
We require twenty-four feet of access and there's in excess of fifty feet there to make that happen, so.
Very good. And is there a, a rule for setback of roads? Can you build a road right on the edge of your, your parcel?
You can.
It's just another example of the, uh, the need for lots.
Yeah. I agree.
Hi, my name's Leslie Orr. Um, me and my husband own the property. Um, the trailer house in the front that we live in, uh, is what we're wanting to split off eventually. We were talking about having his mother-in-law, my mother-in-law, his mom, move here from Oklahoma and live with us. We wanted to build behind the house. My brother also wanted to build behind with us, so we'd have a little family area. Our neighbors that you were talking about to the west here, she wasn't too concerned about it. We do have a little driveway that we created when we moved in that my husband pulls his trailers through and it hasn't caused her any grief. Um, we're just, we promised to help her build that fence back up because it's kind of crinkling over there. But otherwise, we do have a little driveway already there. But if you look down to the, um, east side, past our neighbor's house right there on that acre, there's a little easement already made in a driveway, which we also use to access the back of our property. Um, so there's two ways we can do that, um, to have that access back there. And like we said, we only wanted to rezon that front little piece off for that half acre. Um, just she won't need more than that to, she doesn't want to have to deal with anything else. So then that'll give, um, the back three acres, we can split one acre off for my brother and then have the other for us, the other two. Um, so that's all we're, we're asking. Um, so that's all we're, we're asking for. I have a little tiny map I kinda drew, if you wanted to see what I was talking about, but I, I don't know, you probably already can picture it. It's just that little tiny piece off. Did you have any questions I could answer for you?
No, that, th- thank you very much.
Thank you.
But that, that was just for me thanking y'all at the chairman.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions, concerns, do we have a?
No issues on this.
Motion? Or is there anybody else here to speak on this? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll be glad to, um, move that we, uh, approve the request for rezoning. On parcel number 10502054. For the, um, uh, from, from A to R, R, to allow a, a split of the land in one half acre parcel.
And I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, our last one is rezon 936 dash 25, this is parcel 10745016. This is a, actually for, for San Jose, this is a larger parcel than normal. This is a little over an acre. And this came about because, um, code violation of having two homes on a single parcel. Mr. Hernandez cleaned it up and, and. Got rid of the mobile home that was on the front of the property. And now in order to put another one back, he would like to rezon that into two half acre or 20,000 square foot parcels. The commission unanimously voted to send you a favorable recommendation. There was no opposition or, there was nobody in favor or against at the meeting, nor did we get anything in writing, so. There's nobody here to talk to it.
Okay. Questions for Mr. McGoy?
No, we've been discussing this for a while, I, I think it's, it's gonna be a fine for that area, in my opinion.
And I, I appreciate the chairman, the diligence of our, our P and Z to find the, uh, non-compliant residences and. And, and then provide opportunities for them to come into compliance and actually improve the, uh, the, uh, the neighborhood and, and. And, and it'll be nice to have a, 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 a new residence by the mission there.
Anybody here from the public, sorry? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Go ahead and make a motion to approve as, as we have heard this, uh, request.
And I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you Steve, we appreciate you and your group of guys in planning and zoning. Uh, we'll now close our public hearing, go back into our regular meeting. We'll have our call to the public and, uh, keep in mind, we need to keep these to three minutes. But first, we will hear from Mr. St. Hilaire with the Love Outreach Ministry.
Want me here?
Yes, sir.
Talk a lot because I'm a little bit hard to read. I don't have a few minutes, huh? Anyhow, I'll, I'll do the best I can. Hello people, I'm nervous, it's okay. This is to introduce you to Love Outreach Ministries. Uh, we're a nonprofit organization in the valley. We've been doing this for about two, three years now, but we need a lot of help and that's why I'm here. We last, we gave out backpacks this summer, I, this, it's a school year for the children that need them. And we got a $4,000 grant from the United Way to fill those backpacks up and it, it was very, very good. We had the school superintendent here to help us do this. She's the one that took it over and I wanna give her all of the credit, not none for me. It's not, I'm not here for me, I'm here for him, I think you know who I mean. We've given out different, uh, we have different projects going. We had the fun day at the fairgrounds this, this year and we expect to do that next year again. It's a, it's a real good thing and it's all free to the kids or whoever comes there. Last year we, uh, this year we gave out free hot dogs and free, free potato chips and free soda. And everybody had a good time, we had about 300 people there, it was, it was excellent. I'm not trying to get credit for me, cause it's not for me, this is for the community. We would like to put unity back into the community, this is what we're all about. Uh, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow at two o'clock right over here at the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, we would like people to attend it if they could and we'd like to hear from you. And if you wanna talk to me after the meeting, I'll be sitting here and waiting. And if you've got nothing to say, that's okay too, cause I'm, try to get along with people and I don't want nobody to, uh, to be disappointed. My, anyhow, my name is Joe St. Hilaire and I'm the founder of, of Love Outreach Ministries. And I wanna thank you very much and I know I've used up all my time, so thank you and thank you and thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here and we appreciate your service and what you do. Next, we will hear from Mr. Lackner.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Supervisors, public, Supervisor Howard, Supervisor David, Supervisor Mac. I appreciate you giving me a moment to speak. My name is Don Lackner and I'm the president of the Co-Chief's Cattle Growers Association. On behalf of our members and our board of directors, I want to thank each of you for your initiating and approver, and approving resolutions 2025 dash 07. Regarding the delisting and management transfer of the Mexican wolf. As you're aware, the introduction of the Mexican wolf has had a negative impact on the cattle industry and our area's wildlife populations. Your support of our area's cattle producers as sportsmen is invaluable and deeply appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Lackner, appreciate you being here today.
I would note, Mr. Chairman, they had a very successful, uh, they hosted a very successful Arizona State Cattle Growers Association Conference at EAC and. And, uh, Mrs. Lackner, I've, she, she's almost unflappable, but boy, she was right at the, at, at her limits. She was, she was busy, busy, but, uh, they, they really pull off a nice, a very nice event, thank you.
Thank you, alright, now we'll. Open, uh, open a bid, some bids for our equipment outfitting for four of our patrol trucks.
Do we just have the one bid, uh, manager, Walker?
Yes, Vice Chairman.
Yes, Vice Chairman, just one, one bid came in, these were for, for vehicles that Jeff McCormies and the SO, they were able to get these vehicles on a grant. Under Sheriff McCormies has done an excellent job chasing grants for vehicles. I, I would say the majority, if not all of our last several vehicles were all purchased through, through grant funding. Uh, the outfitting of these is also through grant, grant, grant monies as well. And, uh, so it's, it, it, it's pretty difficult to find people to actually outfit them, it's a pretty unique, uh, skill set, especially here locally. So I'm glad that we got at least one.
Yes, we have the bid I opened was from American Emergency Products.
Okay, thank you Vice Chairman David, this is from, like you said, American, what was that, American Emergency Products. And their bid amount for all four vehicles is $89,357.80.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we go ahead and, and refer this to, uh, internally for review. For compliance to the, the bid specs and, uh, and, uh, and then a determination whether to award that to the bidder. Or, or to rebid, that's, that would be their, their prerogative based on the, what they consider the, a reasonable, uh, bid, so, but.
Yeah, before I second that, I just wanna say that we didn't have any local, local, uh, bidders on that, but that, that is their prerogative. They had the chances and people always say shop local, so I just wanna say, point that out, that we did not get any bids locally. And I'll go ahead and second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. This group is out of Tucson, just FYI. Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, the rest of the agenda, at nine o'clock right now, we have a work session with CSA. So we, we can convene over to here. At 10 o'clock, uh, we have a time certain budget adoption by state statute. We have to say exactly what time that meeting will be, that will be at 10 o'clock. Um, we're a little bit double booked today, at 10 o'clock, there's a ribbon cutting for Eighth Street. That, uh, Vice Chairman, uh, David has been asked to speak at that. He was, uh, very instrumental in securing that, that, that funding from the state. That all came from the state to help, uh, the community, Town of Thatcher, put in that road. So he's gonna be speaking there, we'll have our time certain here at 10 o'clock, so we'll be split up a little bit. And, uh, after that, we'll, we also have a work session that we may be back in here for. And then we'll convene for lunch after that. Alright. Thank you everybody for coming, appreciate y'all being here and hope you have a great week.
Welcome everybody back for our public hearing for our final budget adoption at 10:00 AM this morning. Thank you all for being here. Um.
Just answer the motion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first of all, I'd like to excuse Vice Chairman Paul David. He was asked to speak at the ribbon cutting on Eighth Street, so he's gone over there. But this public hearing is for the final budget adoption of our 25-26 budget. At our last preliminary budget adoption, I went into great depth on everything that's in this budget, so I won't redo that again. We've had this posted in the Courier as required by Arizona State statute with all of the schedules and forms that are required by state statute with contact numbers to ask us any questions that we need leading up to this meeting, and we've had none to date. The packet that you have in front of you has been available to the public. The portions required to be published in the paper have been done so, and I don't believe there's anyone here other than staff. So our recommendation at this time is to adopt the budget that's been presented to the board and to the public, and that is our recommendation. Julie, would you like to add anything? Okay, I would just like to thank Julie and Brandon. Julie has spent hundreds and hundreds of hours literally on the budget. Our departments have spent a lot of time on it, entire finance department, and we're very happy with the budget that we've presented. We're excited for the projects that we have. We're very excited, and our employees have been extremely grateful for the 4% increase that's been allotted to all of us as part of this budget, and just want to reiterate that our employees are our greatest asset. We have incredible employees here, and we very much appreciate the board and all our other elected officials for all of your support. That, I'll recommend this adoption of this budget as presented.
Great, thank you, Manager Welker. Supervisor Howard, did you?
I'll just echo what Dustin just said, and I too have seen how hard the staff works and the whole entire county works to make this county run the way it's ran, so efficient. And I don't think there's another place around that I've seen that puts the time and the effort in to make this county run as efficient as it does. So I thank you. You guys make our job so, so much easier. Thank you, thank you so much.
Great, I would agree with Manager Welker and Supervisor Howard, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve both Graham County and the Graham County Flood Control District for the final budget for fiscal year 2025 and 2026 under the provision of ARS 42-17104.
And I will be glad to second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, thank you guys for all coming to our meeting, and thank you, Julie and Brandon, and Manager Welker for all your hard work that you do to prepare this for us, and we will adjourn our meeting.
Thank you.